We get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by?
Fred.
Zog. Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of August 10th, 2020 council minutes?
Tom moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Morak?
I move we pay bills in amount of $774,729.86.
Seconded. Motion been made and seconded to authorize to pay bills in the amount of $774,729.86. Please cast your ballots. Motion approved unanimously. Move on to public input. Hearing none, we'll move on to standing and special committees. Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met on Monday, August 31st, 2020. Meeting called to order. Agenda was approved. The next item up is wastewater treatment plant faculty facility update. There were no questions or concerns on the update. The next item we brought up was discussion and possible action on ordinance designated ATV/UTV routes. The board reviewed the latest draft ordinance for designing ATV/UTV routes in the city. Discussion took place on sign requirements and when the routes would become legal. Motion made and seconded that the draft ordinance be brought to council for approval of designing ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London. Motion carried five to two. The next, they moved and seconded that the council considers opening ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London with a start date of April 1st, 2021, or if signage is displaced before December 15th. Motion carried, that'll be brought to council tonight. We reviewed a list of potential street products for upcoming community development block grant application. The city has an opportunity to collect community development block grant funding on a revolving loan closeout program through OPAH accounting. The funding can only be used for certain items, one of which is for street improvement projects that about low to moderate income properties. Mr. Hirth provided a map of potential streets that are being reviewed to determine if they qualify. Further discussion will take place on which projects will be targeted once more information is collected on qualifying projects and grant funding totals. No motion was made at this time. The next was to consider an agreement for McMahon and Associates for design work on Warner Allen Boulevard and Shauno Street. The city is looking at bonding in the next year and targeting street improvements on Warner Allen Boulevard. The city also received an LRIP grant for improvements on Shauno Street from Cook to Beacon Avenue. In order to be ready for potential bidding after January 1st, the city needs to begin survey and design work in the fall. Mr. Hirth presented an agreement with McMahon and Associates for seed survey and design work of Warner Allen Boulevard and Shauno Streets. This will come up to about $110,500. That'll be brought to council tonight. The next was to review a draft of 2021 department budget. Chad presented the department's 2021 draft budget. There are no suggested changes at this time. Director's report. The director's memo was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary report. Michelle Lamrec completed three years of service as of August 14th. For next month's agenda items, we'll tour the wastewater treatment plant facility. No further business. Meeting was closed at 5:20. I move to bring, uh, ordinance for designing ATV/UTV routes for the city of New London. This'll be the first reading.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the first reading of the ordinance to designate ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Seven to three, motion passes.
Our next items, I move to consider an agreement for McMahon and Associates for design work of Warner Allen Boulevard and Shauno Street. This, like I said, will be roughly $110,500. This will set us up so that we can apply for these grants.
Seconded. Motion been made and seconded. You got it, Jackie. To approve an agreement from McMahon and Associates for design work of Warner Allen Boulevard and Shauno Street. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes ten zero.
And that is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Move on to finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, September 2nd, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. A proposed amendment to Chapter 13.03 subsection 5 ordinance was brought forth by Utility Manager Jason Basset. The purpose of this change is to allow the utility manager, utility accountant, and utility commission president to sign checks on behalf of the utility. Currently, these checks are brought to City Hall and signed by city staff. Allowing the utility staff to process the checks would make it more efficient for the utility. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by O'Connell to recommend a council approval of amendment to Chapter 13.03 subsection 5 ordinance. Motion carried eight zero. Phil Cossen from Ellers presented refinancing of the 2011 utility bonds due to a drop in interest rates. The utility will save an estimated $380,000 over the life of the bond by refinancing. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by O'Connell to recommend a council approval of the refinancing. Motion carried eight zero. Phil Cossen then presented the city's 2020 capital finance plan, bond sizing, and debt tax rate analysis. The city has a bond that would be paid off, so this debt issue has a small impact on the debt levy tax rate moving forward. Motion was made by Dorsey and seconded by Fache to recommend a council authorization of approximate $2.5 million bonding. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director Ratkey presented an updated purchasing policy. The purpose of the update is to comply with the Newton Blackmore Trail Grant Funding requirements. Motion was made by Fache and seconded by Dorsey to recommend to council the updated purchasing policy language. Motion carried eight zero. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Dorsey to recommend to council approval of the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the 2023 bonding. Motion carried eight zero. Motion was made by Dorsey and seconded by Barrington to recommend to council approval of the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the 2020 bonding. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the monthly financial reports. The date of Thursday, October 15th, has been set for the 2021 budget hearing, committee of the whole. Public is welcome to attend this meeting. Finance Director Ratkey talked about the federal payroll tax deferral. It would be a temporary suspension of the employee's 6.2% share of the social security tax for months current to December 2019 that would need to be paid back January through March of 2021. The decision to participate is up to the employer, and it is her recommendation that the city of New London opt out of participation. Motion was made by Dorsey and seconded by O'Connell to recommend to council that the city opt out of participation in the payroll tax deferral. Motion carried eight zero. The financial director report was discussed. Finance Chair Morak brought up two items to discuss. First being the lighting for the downtown project. Utility Manager Jason Basset will put together some information on this for future discussion. The second item being the grants available for lighting project. Finance Director Ratkey and Public Services Director Chad Hirth will look into the last upgrade and debt repayment schedule to analyze how to move forward. There being no public input or further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. The next regularly scheduled finance committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on Wednesday, November 4th, at 4:30 PM. Then I have a few ordinance and resolutions to consider. Regarding the ordinance to authorize the utility to sign checks for dispersment, I would move that we would waive the rules for adopting an ordinance in one reading.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. The ordinance to authorize the utility to sign checks for dispersment?
With the vote on.
Oh, just to waive the rules, first one, okay. Waive the rules for adoption of an ordinance in one reading. All right. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes nine to one.
Then I would move to adopt the ordinance regarding utility department check writing.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance regarding utility department check writing. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Lori?
Oh, sir.
And Tom?
Tom.
Motion passes nine one.
Then I move to approve the resolution providing for the sale approximately $3,390,000 sewage, water, and electric system mortgage revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020B.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the resolution providing for the sale of approximately $3,390,000 sewage, water, and the electric system mortgage revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020B. Any further discussion?
I believe Phil Cossen has a few words he wants to say.
All right.
Good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. House member Phil Cossen. I did bring this to the utility commission last week and also to the finance committee last week, and then it was approved of the vote from both committees. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. One, this is not new debt being taken on other utilities. This is refinancing existing obligations. It's the $2,011 issue that we'll be refinancing, and we're not looking to extend the life of the debt. We're short enough just to take advantage of the current low rate environment. Our current estimates at this point is savings of approximately $380,000, $380,000 a year annual savings. Half of those have already been incorporated into that issue. If this is on the rise, I think there'll be a lot of work ahead of us on both issues. We'll have to prepare what's called an official statement by the respectness of the utility. We need to rely a great deal on city staff and utility staff to put that together. We'll have to have a rating call with police investment service as part of that. And then at your regular meeting on October 13th, we will bring back to you at that time the final rates of winning bidder and what the actual savings are. I mean, shared with both the utility commission and with finance committee is that if between now and then, we have a situation where market changes and we have interest rates increase substantially, we will either delay or pull the sale. In either case, even if we make tens of way through the process, there'll be no cost to the city and/or utility. If this is part of the business here in operator, we want to make sure that as a longtime advisor for the city and the utility, that what we bring forward to you makes sense financially. And we're never going to bring to you a refunding that doesn't work very well. We want to achieve a high savings for utilities. Work then is quick, that's going into this process makes sense. So, connected with authorization proceeding, and then again, all the work will start in preparing all the documentation, and we will bring it back to the final action by the council and the chair and the whole team.
Thank you, Phil. We have a motion on the floor and it's seconded for resolution providing for the sale of approximately $3,390,000 sewage, water, and electric system mortgage revenue refunding bonds, Series 2020B. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes ten zero.
Then I would move to approve the resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed $2,355,000 for the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2028.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the resolution providing the sale of not to exceed $2,355,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2020A. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Bob Beasaw.
It didn't go through.
Motion carried ten zero.
Then I would move for the initial, to approve the initial resolution authoring, authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $160,000 for equipment for the fire department.
Motion been made and seconded for the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bond in the amount not to exceed $160,000 for the equipment for the fire department. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Hold on, please. Phil?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, my, just, it's funny, they give a three-month plan on why being able to always have a resolution, which would be a full type of one general obligation bond, and it's four, probably eleven years, and all of your ways of the GL bond issue for these different projects, you're issuing bonds, and what that means is any debt that could be issued for a term longer than ten years, we could be broken up by focus and serious things in the expansion of the terms of focus language. And so, we're seeing there, we have broken up fire streets, we've broken up police public grounds, and we have broken up also library and engine. They're all identified as stands here as purposes. We have to break it off when it's just a property, and it did be issued a bond. So, all of those combined end up being that $2,355,000. That's why we have these separate purposes broken out. Eleven is anytime you issue bonds in Wisconsin, you also have to have notice to the electors who later will want you to show them what they're paying. So that's why that is separate resolution as well. So, really, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and the eleven, I have two later, which is the issue here.
Thank you, Phil. All right, well, we have the motion made and seconded for initial, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $160,000 for the fire equipment or the fire department. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move for the, approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $1,435,000 for street improvement projects.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $1,435,000 for street improvement projects.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $1,435,000 for street improvement projects.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $1,435,000 for the street improvement projects. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $255,000 for the construction of police facilities.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Barrington to initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $255,000 for the construction of police facilities. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $285,000 for parks and public grounds projects.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Dorsey for initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $285,000 for parks and public ground projects. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $110,000 for the construction of an engine house.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $110,000 for the construction of the engine house. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $110,000 for library projects.
Motion been made, do we have second?
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Dennis Herter. Initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $110,000 for library projects. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes nine one.
Then I move we approve the resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issues.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington. Resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the updated purchasing policy.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Herter to approve the update purchasing policy. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the resolution of intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the 2023 bonding.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded for resolution of intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for 2023 bonding. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the resolution of intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for the 2020 bonding.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded by Ms. Dean for the resolution of intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing for 2020 bonding. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve that the city opt out of participating in the payroll tax deferral.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the city opt out of participating in the payroll tax deferral. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
Then I move we approve the license list for September as presented.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded for the license list to prove. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Tom, one more time. Thank you, sir. Motion carried ten zero.
I believe that's all I have for now, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. We'll move on to the city admin ad hoc committee. I'll be reading the minutes to that. City administrator hiring group minutes, we met, our, we met on Thursday, August 26th, 2020. Members present, mayor, Mike Barrington, Dave Morak, Bob Beasaw, John Fache, Fred Zog, others present, Lori Dean, Jackie Byers, city clerk. Herter called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Morak moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Barrington. Motion carried by all. Morak moved to go into closed session, seconded by Barrington. Motion carried at 5:05 PM. Moved by Zog, seconded by Barrington to reconvene into open session at 6:20. Carried by all. Moved by Barrington, seconded by Zog to accept the application for the city administration position and proceed to the interview phase. Motion carried by all. Barrington moved to adjourn, seconded by Fache at 6:25 PM. Motion carried by all. No action taken. We'll move on to capital equipment and projects. Mr. Morak again.
Thank you, Your Honor. The capital equipment and projects committee met on Tuesday, August 18th, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the five-year capital plan, years 21, 2021 through 2025. The capital equipment and projects with a greater than 20-year life could be considered for the $2.5 million bonding that was presented to the finance committee in September. A list of the capital and equipment recommendations was presented to the committee for approval by Finance Director Ratkey. There was discussion on the equipment and projects. Then a motion was made by Dean and seconded by Fache to recommend to council the following list. Jail cell toilets and sinks, $10,000. Kitchen cabinet and counters, $8,000. Brush truck for the fire, $150,000. Warner Allen Road, $1,350,000. City Hall roof replacement, section one over the council room, $19,418. Section two over the offices, $133,835. Section three for the north fire bays, $106,700. Police Department roof replacement, $250,000. Library roof replacement, $107,000. Library roof replacement, one hundred and seven thousand six hundred and seventy-five; Newton Blackmore Trail Extension, two hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and ninety-five. And again, the projects and equipment are estimated cost at this time. And then the motion carried nine zero. Mrs. Ratke discussed two resolutions. The purpose of each resolution's law expenditures prior to bonding. One resolution is for the current 2020 bonding and the other is for the 2023 bonding. Both resolutions were brought before the September Finance Committee for approval. Finance Director suggested that the next capital meeting be scheduled once the need arises for approval of a capital equipment or capital project item, and the committee agreed and approved. And then the meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM. Then I would move that the following projects be approved: the jail cell toilets and sinks for ten thousand; the kitchen cabinet and counters for eight thousand; the brush truck for the fire, one hundred and fifty thousand; Warner Allen Road for one million three hundred and fifty thousand; the City Hall replacement roof replacements, section one for nineteen thousand four one eight; section two for a hundred and thirty-three thousand eight thirty-five; section three for a hundred and six thousand seven hundred; the Police Department roof replacement for two hundred and fifty thousand; the Library roof replacement for a hundred and seven thousand six seventy-five; and the Newton Blackmore Trail Extension for two hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the jail cell toilets and sinks, kitchen and cabinets and counters, the brush truck, Warner Allen Road, City Hall roof replacement, both section one, section two, section three; the Police Department roof replacement, the Library roof replacement, and the Newton Blackmore Trail Extension. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. Tom, one more time, buddy. There you go. Motion carried ten zero.
That's all I have for Capitol.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. We'll move on to Park and Recreation. Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The September Park and Rec Committee meeting met on Tuesday, September first. Meeting was called to order at 4:45. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Citizen public participation hearing on community development block grant, CDVG program funds. Craig Shu from Aries and Associates led a public participation hearing regarding a CDVG the city intends to apply for. Items discussed included introduction and purpose of the hearing, identification of total potential CDVG funds, eligible CDVG activities, a presentation identifying the community development needs, identification of any community development needs by the public, a presentation of activities proposed by CDVG application include the development of the Newton Blackmore State Trail Extension, a statement identifying that no residential displacement or acquisition of land is intended for the project, citizens' input questions regarding proposal and other CDVG activities. The committee also discussed several required resolutions that are required to be adopted for the application. A resolution authorizing the city to submit CDVG application, that was moved and seconded. Submit the community development block grant CDVG application. That motion was carried by all. A plan certification certifica certification showing that the citizen participation hearing took place. Motion was recommended the city approve the citizen participation plan and certification. Motion was carried by all. A resolution to adopt a public a policy regarding use of force for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Chad Hirth recommended a change to the original document, presented by the removing a paragraph which mimicked language already defined in the New London Police Department's use of force policy. Almond Fache moved, seconded by Dennis Herter, recommended that council accept the present presented resolution to adopt the policy to prohibit the use of excessive force in the borrowing of entrances and exits for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations after removing the New London Police Department's policy language. Motion was carried by all. Residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, RADRAP. Motion was made by Dean, seconded by Fache, recommended that council agrees with the Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan, RADRAP. Motion carried by all. Review of the draft 2021 Department Budget. Chad Hirth presented the Department's draft 2021 budget. There were no changes suggested at this time. No motion was made at this time. Recommended to council that Department of Parks and Rec draft 2021 fee schedule. The committee reviewed the draft of the 2021 Park and Recreational Fee Schedule. Changes to adult exercise class fees and adding a charge for public table or picnic table rentals were proposed for last from last year's fee schedule. Almond Dean moved, seconded by O'Connell, recommended that the city adopt the community, the Department of Parks and Recreation draft 2021 fee schedule. Motion carried by all. Discuss and consider approval approving user fee or rate card to produce video commercials. Simple was approached by a local chamber member regarding the creation of a video commercial for the business. Video commercials would be a supportive way to promote local businesses and the local economy. A rate card was presented to assist staff in creating a fee for the development of business video commercials. Video commercials will be offered and developed for chamber businesses within the New London School District and all businesses within city limits. Dean moved, seconded by Fache, recommended that city that council approve the City of New London's video creative rate card. Motion carried by all. Director's report memo, the director's report was included in the agenda pack and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary reports. Michelle Lambert, Public Service Administrative Assistant Deputy Clerk of Elections, completed three years of service on August fourteenth. Chairman's report, none presented. Committee members' report, none presented. Future agenda items, survey results of East Center, Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission commercials on the City Channel and the London Access. Moved to adjourn at 5:50, carried by all. I would recommend to council a resolution authorizing the city to submit CDVG application.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to authorize resolution to submit CDVG application. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
I would recommend to council a plan and certification showing that the citizen participation hearing took place.
Motion been made and seconded to approve citizen participation plan and certification. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried by all.
I would look for a resolution to adopt a policy regarding the use of force for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for a resolution to adopt a policy regarding the use of force for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried nine one.
I would look for Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, RADRAP.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Herter. Approve Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan, RADRAP. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried by all.
And I would look for a recommendation to council the Department of Parks and Rec draft 2021 fee schedule.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve 2021 Park and Recreation fee policy and schedule. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried by all.
I would look for a motion discuss and consider approving user fees, a rate card to produce video commercials.
Motion been made and seconded to approve City of New London Video Creation Rate Card. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. We'll move on to Planning Commission. Mr. Beesaw, you're up again.
Okay. August Planning Commission, September Planning Commission was called to order at five o'clock. Those intenants were Beesaw, Basset, Gabbert, Steingraber, and Mayor Herter. Noel and Spillman were excused. The commission was informed that City Galler recently reassigned from the commission as her resigned from the commission as her family has moved out of New London. Agenda was adopted, carried five oh by all. Approval of the 2025-2020 Planning Commission minutes. Motion was made by Herter, seconded by Basset to approve the June twenty-fifth, 2020 meeting minutes as presented. Motion carried five oh. A plan review for Quick Trip North. A copy of a design plans for the North Side Quick Trip building was presented to the commission. The plans include removing and modifying some of the interior kitchen space, adding additional square footage for a new cooler freezer, and removing one parking stall. The intent is to start work on the project in October of this year. Motion by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber to approve the plan as presented. Motion carried five oh. A variance request for accessory structure height at 2411 County Road DD. Gerald Rigger, owner of the property at 2411 County Road DD, is requesting to build an accessory structure having a proposed height of twenty-one feet eight inches, which exceeds the maximum height of fifteen feet as described in the city's municipal code. Rigger approached the commission requesting a variance of the maximum height as he modified his current house to allow his mother-in-law to live with his family, and they need the accessory structure for additional storage. The consensus of the commission was that due to the location of the parcel on the outskirts of the city, that Rigger had no nearby neighbors that the proposed height should not impose any issues. Motion was made by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber to approve the height variance as requested. Motion carried five oh. Wolf River Art League Downtown Murals. The commission discussed several options for additional murals that the Wolf River Art League would like to create within the city. Discussion took place at the previous commission meeting whether or not to allow murals to be painted on the front, the address facing side of the downtown buildings. After discussion, the consensus was to not allow the murals on the front-facing side as it would conflict with the intent of the downtown district guidelines. The commission has also previously reviewed an option to paint the downtown river wall and the base of the State Farm Building. Both locations touch the river in normal and high-water situations. Chad Hirth contacted the DNR regarding those proposals and reported back that the DNR didn't say that these areas could be painted. But if any paint would be spilled in the river, some sort of remediation action would need to take place. In the event that the ice starts to sculler or chip away at the paint, the city would need to take action to prevent and possibly remove the mural, to prevent the flaking paint to pollute the river. Pollution insurance should be obtained by either the city or the Wolf River Art League. The consensus was that the city not wanted to take on that liability. The last proposal was to paint new murals on the east side of 408 North Water Street, CNR Waterfront Bar, deflecting two veterans in patriotic-themed murals. The commission felt that they would rather see one mural on the side of building instead of two. Motion by Gabbert, seconded by Herter to approve one mural at the east side of the CNR Waterfront Bar. Motion carried five oh. Update on planning issues and other agenda items. Chad Hirth informed the commission of the complaint. The building inspector was investigating concerning several potential violations of the municipal code regarding a new accessory structure on Washington Street. Brief discussion took place on several residential structures being built on the status of the New London Acres subdevelopment. Mayor Herter discussed making a future appointment at the next council meeting to fill the open seat on the commission. Next meeting is scheduled for September twenty-fourth, 2020 at five o'clock. Motion to adjourn by Herter, seconded by Basset. Meeting adjourned at 5:31. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move on to Economic Development Committee. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth at 4:30 PM in New London City Council Chambers and via Zoom. The Wapaka County Marketing Cooperative Investment was discussed. This has been a tourism expense in the past, however, that committee feels that it's not a New London-only-based expense. They're asking the city to pay this membership moving forward. The 2020 bill is yet to be paid, which is $3,000. It would then be a 2021 budget item. Motion was made by Fache, seconded by Dorsey, to approve the expenditure. Motion carried twelve zero. Chad Hirth displayed the 2021 budget and explained the expenses. Motion made by Bishop and seconded by Kopitsky to recommend the budget as presented to council. Carried the motion carried eleven one with O'Connell voting yes. Kopitsky gave the business update as well as most recent unemployment numbers, which were down. Mark suggested any future speakers be put on hold until October. Mayor Herter called the Committee of the Hold to order at 4:50, joining the Economic Development Meeting. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 6:36 PM. That's all I have for Economic Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morak. Move on to Committee of the Hold. I'll be reading the minutes for those. Committee of the Hold met on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. Special and open meeting of the City of the New London Common Council was convened on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, 2020 at 4:50 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building. Presiding Mayor Herter, council members presenting were Beesaw, Fache, Barrington, Dorsey, O'Connell, and Morak. Pinch and Zog via Zoom. Also present were Finance Director Judy Ratke, Chad Hirth, Director of Public Services, and Acting City Administrator Todd Hutchison, Library Director Ann Hunt, Jay Ratke, and Hans Thompson via Zoom, City Clerk Jackie Byer, and April Kopitsky were present. Public present Connie Zloski, Betty Roberts, Laurie Dillinger, and Joe Van Alstine, Chris Biermann, and Ron Steinhorst. Mayor Herter called the meeting to order as a joint meeting with the Economic Development Committee. Morak and Fache approved the agenda, carried by all. Todd Hutchison spoke about his time with the city coming to an end and this being his final report. He included a summary of a housing study. He reported options on how to move forward with the riverfront development and what was supported by the housing study. Morak asked what the next steps should be. He stated a decision needs to be made and moved on. Judy Ratke, Treasurer, Finance Director, spoke about a TIF policy with a pay-go structure being the preferred method and a recommendations. A planner to do the proposal was discussed. A planner and the TIF issues will be agenda items at the next meeting of this group. Ron Steinhorst presented a briefing on where we on where we came from and where we are now with regards to the library project. He offered a new technology-based approach to solving the library projective divide. He cited Laurie Dillinger Van Alstine and Joe Van Alstine as the creative minds for this cutting-edge development. It would be located on the vacant lot across from the current library. The existing library would continue to operate as is. This new structure could house a STEM lab, a teen center, private study rooms, collaborated workspace, a large meeting room with an adjacent kitchen, and a computer center. This project has the support of school superintendent. Also, a budget is formed with the help of Keller. The group will be back to discuss. The group will be back to discuss that with the city. Mayor Herter thanked the group, calling the project "an outstanding idea looking toward the future." There was no public comment, there being no further business. Mr. Morak, Mr. Fache, to adjourn both meetings at 6:36 PM, carried by all. Next on the agenda is the minutes and reports of the Cemetery Committee, Housing Authority, Library and Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility, Cemetery and Building Inspector. You guys should all have them minutes, any discussion? All right, we'll keep moving on for reports of officers on recent events and announcements to the public. I'll start this off. I'd like to appoint Jamie Wallbrook to the Planning Commission. Jamie's in our audience tonight. Thank you, Jamie, for taking on that role. We can move right past the city clerk, she said next month, to Item C, Utility Manager. Mr. Basset, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Electric crews have continued their pole replacement. They replaced two poles on River Road, two on Wood Lane, one on Else Road, and an anchor on River Road as well. Electric crews also built a new setting for familiar grounds to accommodate a new voltage for the lift station upgrade on North Water Street. They transferred that service over on September 3rd. Electric crews installed underground services at 1100 Lawrence Street, 1208 Nina Street, and 1018 Manasha Street. Water crews have been busy replacing broken valves and leaking valves at Avon and North Water Street, Smith and Beacon, 1202 Mill Street, Karen Court, Elmen North Water, and Leaking Services at 1006 Algoma and Algoma and Wallace Street. Water crews also completed their valve exercising for this year. Andy Chandler has completed his training for a Tier 1 FLUR certification, and he also worked with WPPI for testing our large power customers' CTs and meters for accuracy. Our office phones were upgraded today, not by the request of our office, but shall we lose service in the future? It'll now be backed up by cellular. So if we lose one of our lines, it'll be backed up, which I think is going to be a good thing, but nobody likes change for some reason. And I would also like to recognize Mike Pinch for 23 years of service with New London Utilities. That's all I have.
Congratulations, Mr. Pinch. Thank you, Mr. Basset. We'll move on to Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, starting off in our Recreation Department, we're still offering Fitness at Pfeiffer classes. That's at Pfeiffer Park. That's Monday through Saturday, and schedule updates will be posted on our Facebook page. We also have a few exercise instruction positions open, so if you're interested in teaching exercise classes for either adult or seniors, we have got some great part-time opportunities for you, so check out our website, and you can sign up and register and apply for those jobs on the employment page on the city's website. On the street side, if you've gone past the corner of Mill Street and Industrial Loop Road, you'll notice that the crossing just to the east of that Industrial Loop Road, Mill Street Crossing, has been closed. The contractor that we've hired is working with Canadian National. It's a partnership between us and Canadian National, and Canadian National started their work, but our contractors had some problems unfortunately gaining the permits from Canadian National to do our side of the project. So I was told at the end of last week, they finally got their permits from Canadian National, and they should be working on the project soon. I didn't get down there today to see if they started, but that's why you probably seem to lay down there. Some work started, and then nothing's been going on. But I've been told we finally, our contractor finally got those permits, and they should be starting their work pretty quick. Once they're done with the Industrial Loop Road crossing, they're going to go to the High Street Crossing and do the same thing for crossing improvements. About three weeks ago, we published the new city website. It's got a really nice updated look, and it's designed a lot better for mobile devices. Today's trends is everybody's looking on a mobile device or tablet, and the new way the website responds to the use of a mobile device or a tablet is much better than what the old site was. So check it out and let us know what you think. We are still getting some bugs out of it, so if you do find a bug in the system, let us know, and we're working on correcting those bugs, but it's got a really nice new look. And then lastly, if you're an avid Facebook user, I hope you've noticed all the great information we're pushing out. City staff has done a really good job, and if you're really looking at our Facebook page, they're getting everything out from recreation programs, museum programs, or library programs, street closures, lost and found items of the police department, our public agendas are on there, election information, and now we've got some really cool, high-grade videos that we're showing, really promoting the community. So really, I mean, I don't think anybody's got an opportunity to say they don't know what's going on, because if you are on Facebook, we've got everything out there, what's going on in the city. So staff has really been doing an awesome job pumping out that information and getting that stuff out there.
I like the fact that you're starting to answer, and I don't know who's doing it, but I've seen different people have comments on there, and you guys are getting back to them rather quickly, and I think that's a very good idea. I think that's excellent.
Missy's been doing a great job catching those, and then she'll reroute them to whoever, you know, the responding person should be. So like I said, if you really are complaining that you don't know what's going on, just go to that Facebook site, and the staff are doing an awesome job pumping out that information. So and then like our Facebook page, and then you really will know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirth, and thank you to all involved in that transition to our city website and our city Facebook page. We'll move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two anniversaries. Ashley Boskew is 13 years, and Steve Elliott, two years. I also want to inform the community that over the last couple of weeks, we've had a few cars entered and stuff at night, and I know I've said this before, but please lock your vehicles at night. It'll really deter people from going into them. We've mainly had small items taken out of them and stuff like that, so please lock up your vehicles. Also, today on the Facebook page, Missy put it out there, Halloween for trick-or-treating is October 31st from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM here in New London. So hopefully, we don't see any major changes that anything would have to change, but that's the plan for right now, so thank you much.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on to the Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. All I have tonight is some service anniversaries. Kale Wilfer, four years. Tyler Guyette, four years. Brandon Whitting, eight years. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for their service, their anniversaries. Thank you all. All right, we'll move on. Looking for a motion to go into closed session per 19.85 subsection 1 subsection G regarding current litigation by Judy Radke, Finance Director, and Jackie Byer, City Clerk. Motion been made and seconded. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried 9-1. Five-minute recess. Tear down.